Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, July 25, 2022. I call the meeting to order and ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, folks, I know you're excited to be here, but we're we so we can conduct the meeting. That'll be great. Thanks. Anna Rolcall, please.
Chair DeRico.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Toller is absent. Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Here.
Please note Commissioner Vivar is present via Zoom. Commissioner Erith.
Present.
Please note Commissioner Erith is present via Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. And also, for the record, to note that the city attorney, Mr. Prezioci, is also present at the meeting via Zoom. This takes us to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where the public is invited to address the Planning Commission on matters that are within our jurisdiction but are not on tonight's agenda. That means not on tonight's agenda. So if are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the commission on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Anna, do we have anybody via Zoom or telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. We'll close that public comment then, and we'll go to Commissioner Comments, and we'll begin with Commissioner Erith.
Thank you, Chair. I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Vivar?
No, sorry, do not have any comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rojas?
No, sir, I do not have any comments. Thank you.
About Commissioner Russell?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
A vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For people that regularly attend our meeting, these comments will sound redundant, but I'm always encouraged when I see new faces in the audience. And so I'd like to remind people that there's a benefit to visiting the city's website if you're interested in receiving automatic notifications when important things are happening in the city, in particular, city council meetings, city council meeting agendas, Planning Commission meetings, Planning Commission meeting agendas, so that you know what's going on in your community. I recognize you're probably here because of things happening in your immediate neighborhood, but if you're interested in things happening in the entire community, the city's website is a great resource. Under residence, you can sign up for email notifications for probably 20 or 30 different categories of information items. Provide your email address. You automatically get notified whenever the city has information in that category to send out. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I have no comments tonight, so that takes us to consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar, so we'll move to public hearings. And Anna, I would ask that you read public hearing item number one into the record.
Public hearing item number one, planning application 21-27 for retail cannabis storefront use with delivery located at 1072 Bristol Street, Suite 100. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Vivar, any ex parte communications to report?
None at all.
Commissioner Erith?
Yes, sir. I talked to the applicant, Mr. Singh, for about a half hour today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Rojas?
None of reports.
Commissioner Russell?
None to report.
Okay, vice chair.
Nothing, sir.
And I have none to report as well, so we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Drapkin for the staff report.
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the commission. Did have a chance to speak to the applicant this morning, and the applicant has, after receiving many of the neighbor concern letters, has requested a continuance to provide some neighbor outreach at the at the site, most likely next week, and he'd like to request a continuance to the August 8 hearing.
Okay, is the applicant here?
He was filling under the weather, as he's mentioned, so he might not be here. So that's but we didn't talk about that.
So, okay, so I think what's trying to think how we want to proceed here, because these folks all showed up. So, Mr. Drapkin, I'm going to have you go ahead and provide a staff report to us, please. And then we will open the public hearing, and we will hear from the folks in the audience. I will advise the folks in the audience, if you speak tonight during public comment, well, I won't even say that. So we'll go ahead and go ahead and speak. And what I would say is, at our next meeting come around, when we if we do continue this item, the public hearing will be continued. Public comment will also be received at that meeting. So you'll have two opportunities. All right? So go ahead, Mr. Drapkin.
Sure, I'll keep this brief, Chair, but just for an introduction perspective, the applicant is requesting a cannabis retail storefront and delivery at 1072 Bristol Street, Suite 100. This is an existing 11,880 square foot commercial building. It is located in the C1, which is retail, is zoned for the intended uses of retail. Generally, the uses that are in the center now are predominantly office. The suite that the applicant is proposing is 3,286 square feet. The door that's being proposed from an introduction, from an entrance perspective, would be located near Newport Boulevard. The site is on the at the located at the intersection of Bristol Street and Newport Boulevard. And the applicant is he's requesting that we actually may go back a little bit. The parking currently is legal nonconforming, and the applicant has done some research with regards to the actual use of the parking lot, and it shows that there's significant amount of surplus parking throughout the day. And staff has reviewed the application, reviewed it from the state and the local requirements, and is recommending approval of the application. However, again, like I mentioned earlier, the applicant is requesting a continuance, as staff has received numerous, over 20 correspondences from the neighborhood on Master Circle, and the applicant would like to perform some outreach with them.
Okay, so so let's do this. I'm going to ask the commissioners to we'll open the public hearing, and we'll receive the comment from the people. I'm going to ask the commissioners to defer on their questions to staff until if we continue this till the next meeting. I'm assuming we will, since the applicant requested it. So we don't these folks probably want to get home. They want to say their piece and then get home, and I'm sure all of us would, too. So if we can defer our questions of staff until the next scheduled meeting. Also, there may be we should probably have the HDL representative here if there's anything related to security questions. So I think it'd be best if we had a full boat before we start taking questions. So the chair's going to make that the chair's going to make that decision. So what I'll go do is go ahead and open public hearing and open the public comment portion of the public hearing. If you wish to speak to this item, you'll have three minutes. You can come to either podium, I'll check the podium mics on, and you can address the commission tonight when we continue this to the next whatever meeting date we continue it to. You can also speak at that meeting. So you can take your pick. You can speak tonight. You could speak at the second meeting. So you could speak at both, or just if you want to move things along, you can come forward now and 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 address the commission. So anybody wish to come forward tonight? Because likely what's going to happen, we're going to continue this, so. Yes, ma'am, you will. So so go ahead.
Okay, so this is basically the letter that I wrote to the the Planning Commission. My name is Claudia Tebs, and I oppose the planning application 21-7 for conditional use permit to allow retail cannabis storefront business and non-delivery and non-storefront delivery. I have been a homeowner on the Master Circle. It's a cul-de-sac of 40 homes and families for 25 years. My home is directly behind the parking lot and the building at 1072 Bristol. One thing that I do want to point out is the gentleman mentioned that the entrance is on Newport Boulevard. The entrance does not face the street. The entrance is in the parking lot, which faces the homes, and it's from my backyard, from my patio. It's about 50 to 60 feet away. I'm concerned about noise. Currently, the businesses behind our homes have office hours, generally 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. I'm concerned about cars, motorcycles, and people pulling in and out of the parking lot until 9 or 10 at night, seven days a week. My patio backs up to the parking lot, and my teenage daughter's bedroom overlooks the parking lot and building. I've submitted two attachments, attachment one and two. I don't know if those will be presented, or do we need to bring our own flash drive at the next meeting?
So if you if you want to show pictures, you need to submit them to the city by noon of the day of the meeting?
I submitted them via email.
Okay, yeah, because staff has to review whatever images that you are going to present. So by noon on the day of the meeting?
I submitted them last night.
Okay.
So I submitted six attachments. I don't know. Do you bring them up?
Do we have any images? Anna?
They were on my email.
Okay, give us a minute.
Sure.
If not, I would just ask that you.
Yes.
If you if you have a presentation you would like to make, keeping in mind you have three minutes at the next meeting, bring it on, but I would submit it to the city by noon, but also bring it on a flash drive.
Okay.
You have more time.
Okay. I'm concerned about the odor. The applicant states that they have filters and man traps to control odor. Does that does this mean that they will be burning marijuana inside the building? Our homes are very close to the storefront. The storefront, like I said, does not face the street. It faces the parking lot, which backs up to our homes. See attachment three, the picture I sent. I'm concerned about a decrease in our property values. I would not purchase a home next to a cannabis dispensary if I was looking for a home. Cannabis dispensaries seem to open up in clusters. I don't want my neighborhood to become a hub for marijuana dispensaries, and I attached an attachment that shows the clusters. The pictures submitted by the applicant fail to show how close the homes are to the proposed storefront. In fact, they don't show the homes at all and the proximity to the building. Attachment five shows how close the homes are on Google Earth. With a picture, you can see all the homes, and they're within 50 to 90 feet of the building. There are plenty of retail centers away from residential areas. Please do not allow cannabis retail store to open up in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak this evening to this item in the chambers? Please come forward, sir.
My name is Richard Rosenberg. I live at 106th Master Circle. I've been a homeowner since 2009. And I find, after doing some research, by the way, I'm an income tax and accounting specialist, so legal formations is something very easy to research. And in speaking to various county officials today, one of the applicants who is excuse me, any of my glasses, who is Tim Taber, claims that he is not in the ownership of the building, and therefore he can legally be an owner in the business. This is a guise. Here is a legal document that shows that the resident agent of service for Tabertown LLC, which owns the building, is none other than, oh, Tracy Taber. That's his wife. And under California law, community property, the tax return, the profits that come from the building flow through into their personal return. I have legal documents off the Secretary of State of California's website that I'm glad to give you. Furthermore, Tabertown LLC, owned basically by Tim and Tracy Taber, took over Suite 101, and they moved the residents, the tenants that were in there, out of Suite 101, bought out their lease, paid for their move, and helped them relocate their business. One of my clients, which is a farmer's insurance, happens to be in Suite 102. Not only is this going to be in Suite 100, it will take over Suite 101, because Tim is a partner in the business. It will also take over Suite 102 and all the ground level suites. That means they're going to be moving businesses out of Costa Mesa, because their leases all expire December 31. When Suite 102 asked about renewing their lease, they said, well, we would suggest you start looking for another residence or another place of business. So we're going to lose businesses. We're going to lose livelihood. We're going to create additional traffic of who knows unknown people, intangible people, people who either have drug problems, alcohol problems. We don't need it in our neighborhood. We don't need our kids being subjected even within 100 yards. This is no different than pedophiles. You don't let them anywhere near a school. Why let cannabis stores anywhere near our children, our elderly parents, who we're taking care of? My next door neighbor has a 96-year-old mother that he is taking care of. Do we need this around there, ejecting to her health?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Your three minutes are up. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Yes, please hand it to the clerk. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this item tonight? Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? If if you're planning on if you plan to speak, could you please come to either podium so I can see how many folks are planning on speaking? Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dave Walker. I've been on Master Circle for the last 17 years. There's been a bigger block problem for years, Long Sand and Country Club. Spending the night there, they're spray painting. Can you hear me okay? Do you want me to pull it down?
Pull the mic down towards you. Thank you.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, so there's been a problem constantly calling the police. We had a guy that was half naked with his pants down to his ankles, sleeping in front of the cul-de-sac at the end of the cul-de-sac a couple of weeks ago, constantly walking back and forth. I feel that this cannabis location is going to be a problem. We've got many kids on the street within 1,000 feet of the proposed location. It just we have had car theft on our street quite a bit, where people go back and forth. I just feel that this cannabis location is going to be a problem. It's going to be a problem for the value of maybe the members at Sand and Country Club when they start seeing people going back and forth. You've got a one-way road on Newport Boulevard. All it's going to take is one person who's going to be stoned, who's going to buy cannabis, and is going to make a left turn on Newport Boulevard instead of going right. If they come in on Bristol, they're not going to know it's a right turn. They're going to they could very possibly go left. You could have head-on collision, somebody who's stoned. I don't think it's a good idea at all. There's mental health facilities, two on our street, drug rehab. Do you think it's a good idea to have a cannabis location 1,000 feet from drug rehab locations, two of them on our street? Don't think it's a good idea. I vehemently oppose. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Mary Ann Orr, 174, the Master Circle. We've also been on the street for over 30 years. Just a few things to point out. You do a Google map of cannabis dispensaries within near me. It comes up with over 20, one being less than half a mile away. Is there a need? Is there really a need for an additional one within that short radius? Also, per Dave's Dave Walker's comment about the 1,000 feet, we pulled that information off of the city website as to what is required and the zoning maps in regards to cannabis applications. So again, that's a direct conflict of what you're posting on the website there. The other thing I wanted to share also is, we all know that crime's been going up, especially since things have been opening up, and there's been homelessness increases in the city, theft, auto burglary, all of that. Just some simple statistics. Costa Mesa had a 7.61% increase in crime in 2021 over the prior year. Driving those numbers was rape at 4.69%, robbery at 25%, aggravated assaults at 45 and 1/2, and motor vehicle theft at 15%. As of May of this year, we are already trending at 5.48%. So we're looking at double-digit crime increases in a year and a half time period. Driving those numbers are larceny and motor vehicle theft. These are taken off of the Costa Mesa PD website. Also, a few other things that I was able to find on NeighborhoodScout.com, which is a real estate website that real estate agents can use to kind of find out about the neighborhoods that their prospective clients are looking to purchase. And we had crimes, property crime comparison per 1,000 residents. Costa Mesa was 32.05. The California average was 21.3, and the national median was 19, showing Costa Mesa leading that and being over the state and the national average. And the also the Costa Mesa crimes per square mile, Costa Mesa was at 260. The state average was 77, with a national average of 26.9. We can't handle the crime that we already have. And I agree with all of the neighbors that are here to express their concern about the crime and the availability and being and the proximity to the children and our residences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. My name is Vice Laiafi. I live at 162 the Master Circle. I'm a professor of urology at the University of California, Irvine. I left work early to be here today. I moved into our street, the Master Circle, about three years ago, because I wanted to raise my kids in a neighborhood that was safe and a cul-de-sac where the kids can ride bikes. Since we moved on the street, we've had two kids, and there are at least another four or five families that have kids that are the age of our kids. Today, I was teaching my daughter how to ride a bicycle on the street. We already have people that we don't know walking on the street almost on a daily basis. We have cars racing on our street, because we're in close proximity to the fair, for example, where people are trying to park. We wanted to go to the fair yesterday with the kids, and we're worried about taking the kids on a wagon to the fair from our house, because when we turn left from the Master Circle on Newport Boulevard, there's a bunch of homeless people that look nefarious over there. So adding a dispensary within 1,000 feet where kids are riding bicycles on the street, this is not a commercial area. This is a residential area. I understand that it is labeled as a commercial area, but it is a residential area. We have our kids over there. We ride bikes with our kids on the street, and we can't even go off the street with our kids, walking on bikes or riding our riding the bikes because of all the homeless and homeless people on the street. So we really don't need another dispensary that's going to add to that problem on the street. There are numerous places, I think, where dispensaries can be placed that are far from residential areas, where they can thrive, they can have more parking space. The last thing I'll say is, right now, with the fair ongoing, half of the people trying to go to the fair, trying to be smart about parking, try to park on our street. Just imagine a dispensary within 1,000 feet of our home, where people are going to be trying to park. They're going to be double parking on our street to run down and buy their pot. So I urge you to reconsider having a dispensary this close to a residential area, and I'll rephrase it, actually, sorry, to reconsider having a dispensary in a residential area where there are a lot of young families and a lot of elder people who are quite sick and really don't need that added stress in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
My name is Susan Gabriel. My husband and I moved onto the street in 1970. We were the first. We've raised three children on the street, and what you probably are unaware of is that in order to get picked up by a bus to go to the school, you have to go to a, you know, out to the end of the street. And the hours of this operation are just offensive to me. I try to be open-minded about businesses and and property rights and everything, but 7 o'clock in the morning, to me, if it was really a retail business, 10 to 5 would be an excellent hours. I don't know what kind of power or privilege of your authority that the the city council exercises on businesses, but I can only advise you as an old lady that it's better to make your move early, because once they're in, if you try to impose something, it's never going to be respected or followed. So please, at the very least, change their hours of operation to be something more compatible with a business nearby of a residential area.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Peterson at 118 the Master Circle. I'm probably the newest resident. I moved in in March, so I just wanted to give the perspective as a new home buyer. Absolutely, this would decrease the value of the neighborhood. Probably would not have considered this a home if I knew this establishment would be put in place. I agree with everything everyone has said so far. It's going to be an absolute nightmare. I see traffic accidents, more nefarious characters. The hours are absurd. So, yeah, just the new perspective, I thought, be valuable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is this only about the dispensary?
It is.
I have something else.
I'm sorry?
I'm here about something else.
Well, the public comment portion is already passed. Well, okay, I'm sorry about that. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I have an extreme fear of public speaking, so I'm going to be really short. Everything they all said. My name is Linda Rank. I'm owner at 150 the Master Circle. I have been there for, I think, seven years. One thing I did want to add is the one-way street that's right, the one-way street, that is our only exit. It's the only way to get out of our houses, out off of our street, is to pass. It's right there on the corner. And it's not just nearby our houses. It's in our backyards. We had one incident with the police already, where there was a criminal who had was in our backyard and hopped the fence into the parking lot, into those business buildings at 4 o'clock in the morning. It was very scary for us. But I'm going to end because I'm really.
Oh, take your time. Take your time. It's okay.
It terrifies me to speak.
I understand.
But that's how strongly I feel about this.
You did terrific. You did terrific. No worries. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, folks. I hear a little different perspective. I bought at the Master Circle in 1988. I've been in this town longer than all of you have been alive. I'm here over 70 years. First police department I saw was at a gas station. And what has happened over the years that I have been here is somewhat criminal. It went from a bedroom community, Laughing Lino is a good hill, to what it is now with six gangs, increasing number of marijuana places, and the and the trouble on the streets is not being even slowed down. It's increasing. Either we need to increase the police department and start stop regulating the way we regulate new marijuana or other criminal businesses, or we should just open it up and let it be a wide-open town. Might as well have a sign at the border and say, hey, welcome to Costa Mesa. We'll give you a place to live, medical attention, all kinds of stuff. So for Christ's sakes, knock off giving away these permits. You're giving away building permits to places. They build these giant condominiums and whatever, and the sewer hasn't changed. One of these days, you're going to explode that, too. This marijuana thing close to children is a ridiculous situation. It is illegal, and it is not and that all the way Costa Mesa was supposed to be. I've had two parents that were educated here, one at school named after this town, McNally. I've had two parents that were educated here, one has school named after this town, McNally. I don't believe at any point in my life I have seen this town even consider such action as you are now.
Finished your remarks, sir?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi there. I'm Ellen Hansen Walker. I've been a resident on Masters for 17 years now, and I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I just want to reiterate, Master Circle is such a unique street in the city, period. There's only one way to get in, one way Newport Boulevard North, and only one way to get out. And so this means now if this dispensary is going to be there right at the corner, we're going to be every day of our life and everything that we do in a day driving past this. To come out of that building area off to Newport Boulevard, now we're going to have increased traffic. We're going to have, there's very limited parking there, by the way, as well. So I don't know what they plan to do as far as parking, but I go back to, I don't understand what the benefit is of having it there. There are so many other locations in Costa Mesa, there's so many facilities that, there's so much commercial real estate that's vacant right now, Red Hill, Baker, Pullman. Why does it have to be here in an area that's right next to a residential community? So that's the big question. My other question to you all is, I just learned that this is even happening a few days ago. What is the process going forward? Because this person comes in and says, "I want to open a business here." How do we continue to fight this? And what does the city do to defend us? And how does the process work where it ultimately gets blessed or not? That's my question.
Okay, so there's a public noticing requirement by law, and I believe Mr. Drapkin mailed notices go out to residents within 500 feet of the subject property 10 days prior to the hearing. Is that correct?
And we, we.
Doug, no, no. I'm not asking you whether you received the notice. I'm asking him what the policy is. Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's, so it may be the policy. I didn't set it. That's been the policy for as long as I can remember, but mailed notices go out 10 days in advance.
To each resident?
Residents within 500 feet of the subject property.
And we didn't get it. I'm just letting you know that.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, well.
The other, the other element is, is that the city's, the agenda and the staff report for the item is posted to the city's website 72 hours before the meeting.
Okay, so that's a few things to know that you need to.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So as Vice Chair Zick pointed out, that's why it's really important.
Got that.
That if you want to stay on top of these, that you enter your email and you receive notices from the city when this is going to happen, when these kind of things are going to happen.
So then what happens, though? We've had our meeting tonight, then I heard you say that the applicant couldn't make it tonight. We have to meet again?
The applicant has requested a continuance of the public hearing. The commission has not voted on that yet.
So you all vote on it ultimately, is that right?
We'll vote on the item when we, either tonight, we'll either continue it or we'll vote on the item. When we, if we continue it, we'll vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Which would be August 8th.
And then you just vote, and then it goes or it doesn't go?
Well, so the process is, and I want to get a running, so the process is, I'm sorry, if the application were approved, it could be appealed to the city council within seven days. If the application was denied, the applicant can appeal to the city council.
Then the question is, do you have other applications?
Many, because, so, and to address his issue, his issue in, what is it, 20, was it 2018? Measure Q. 20. So the Costa Mesa voters approved the sale of cannabis as a recreational use in a retail setting two years ago in a ballot measure. City council set up a regulatory regime and ordinances to implement the will of the voters to have retail cannabis available in Costa Mesa. That's what we're implementing. There are many applications for retail storefronts that are pending.
Now, I did search to see if there were any legal general area. I noticed there were so many that were permanently closed. Do you know why?
Those were probably not legal operations.
Okay.
So, and really, that's all I should say right now.
Okay.
Is because there's other people that want to speak, so I want to make sure everybody gets a chance, all right?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I'm 100% with everybody here.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? You've already spoken, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to this item? Please come forward.
I've already been asked.
Oh, no, if you already spoke, then no, we're, yeah. You can come back at the second meeting. We've already, yeah, we're not going to do that. Yes, ma'am. Please, well.
We're not on the agenda.
Well, no, we're not. We don't have that application in front of us tonight, so we can't, you'll be able to speak. But it's not on the agenda tonight. Okay?
Except it is.
Mr.?
It's a historic notice. Do I have to get it? Yeah.
Mr. Drapkin.
Chair, unfortunately, that notice was erred, so that was, that was the reason.
All right. I appreciate that. So my apologies, that was, that was an error in notice, but since it's not on the agenda tonight, the commission can't hear you on it.
When, when is it going to be?
Mr. Drapkin, do you know when that item will be?
It'll be re-noticed, and then the, and the neighbors will receive another notice when it's scheduled.
Sometime next month will be one of the meetings.
Most likely.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this item?
Government.
Okay. Anna, is there anyone on Zoom or on telephone?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or telephone?
Caller ending in 937, you may provide your public comment.
Okay. Caller 937, you may speak.
Hi, my name is Colette Kim. I live at the Master Circle. I'm here officially to oppose for the application of 2127 for the retail cannabis storefront. I wanted to add to you a couple of different notes. Number one, the safety of my family is very, very important. The continuous loitering of unknown persons throughout our street, our neighborhood, has become a huge problem for all of us. In addition to the crime due to the business of the cannabis business because of the large amounts of cash transactions at those types of retail sites, I wanted to specifically emphasize the traffic and the indirect and direct problems that this type of business creates to our residences. Number one, in the application, it states that they will service commercial cannabis businesses also, and will conduct shipping and deliveries of products. During that, it sounds to me like they are gearing up to run the business as a medium-to-large-scale distribution, which means for us as homeowners, there will be continual commercial delivery trucks in and out of the location at all hours. Where they plan to receive the deliveries is approximately 20 feet from my neighbor's backyard. The noise from the commercial trucks beeping, loading and unloading will be a continual nuisance and an absolute hindrance to our quiet enjoyment as homeowners. We did not come in and buy this property to live in an industrial setting with businesses being run 24 hours. The second point is, the entrance to the business, the mere 50 feet from the entrance to my cul-de-sac off of Newport Boulevard, the traffic is already really bad during the morning and afternoon time period. It will just get so much worse with all the delivery trucks and the foot traffic of the people going into that, out of those businesses. There's only two ways to enter and leave that business. One, which is off Newport Boulevard, 50 feet from our cul-de-sac, and the second is off of Bristol Street. But those two, it's not a through right, right fair, so you cannot go through Newport out to Bristol. So they have to come to same location as they went out. And for us as homeowners, so close by, not only because of the smell of the marijuana or the noise or the nuisance or the people, the people hanging around late at night, all of that together just makes it unbearable for us that have bought our homes there for a very, very long time. I'm asking city council to please, please think of it as if it was your home or your brother's home, your sister, your mother, or anybody in your family, if they live there, would you want them, your children, to raise your grandchildren in a setting where there's people buying cannabis, marijuana products, driving around high when your children are getting ready to get up to go to school, items like that? I mean, would you want them in your backyard that close? I'm not opposed to a cannabis business. I'm just opposed if it's so close to our home.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. That was three minutes. Thank you. Anna, do we have anyone else on Zoom or phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so what we're going to do is, I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing to the meeting of August 8th, 2022. And so I'll go ahead and make that motion. Is there a second?
Second, Chair.
Okay, I have it seconded actually by Commissioner Rojas on the, on the electronic voting, so we'll go ahead with the motion by the chair to continue to August 8th. I'll hold open the public hearing. We'll also hold open public comment. If you want to come back on the 8th and speak again, we'll allow you to do that. And so we have a second by Commissioner Rojas, and I'm going to go ahead and just ask that you call the roll vote, Anna. Aye.
Vice Chair Zick.
Aye.
Commissioner Rojas.
Aye.
Commissioner Russell.
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar.
Aye.
Commissioner Erath.
Yes.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Toller absent.
Okay, thank you very much. We will hear this item, then continue hearing this item on August 8th. Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of our public hearing item, agenda tonight. We have no old business, we have no new business. We'll move to department reports. Public services report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, honorable members of the planning commission, good evening. For tonight's public works report, the department would like to announce the following.
Hold on, Mr. Yang. Hold on until the chamber clears. Folks, if you want to talk outside, could you please clear the chamber? Thank you. Sir, thank you. We want to finish up the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, our department will now be known as the Public Works Department instead of the Public Services Department. This will enhance the image of the department as well as reduce confusion, as we've experienced that many in the public weren't quite sure what public services meant. The term public works is pretty much synonymous at most cities. Therefore, we will now be known as the Public Works Department. During the city council meeting of July 19th, the council approved a resolution to allow enforcement of parking restrictions during the posted hours on street sweeping days. Before enforcement was done, only when the street sweeper was present. Now, after the city council's action, parking enforcement can be any time during the posted hours regardless if a sweeper is present or not. By doing so, it allows the city to pursue normal maintenance activities, promote efficient use of staff time, and properly enforce parking restrictions. During the Parks and Community Services or PAX Commission meeting this Thursday, July 28th, staff will be giving a presentation on the new Taywinkle Park Lakes project, in which new improvements will be discussed with respect to the park's iconic lakes. Members of the public are invited to join by attending the meeting in person here at the city council chambers or via Zoom. Again, the PAX Commission meeting will be this Thursday, July 28th at 6:00 p.m. Lastly, Public Works is proud to announce the opening of the city's first pickleball court at Tanner Park, along with the installation of new playground equipment. An opening ceremony will be held this Wednesday, July 27th at 5:30 p.m. at Tanner Park. The public is welcome to join, and the mayor and some members of the city council will be present as well. That concludes my public works report, and I will defer back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yang. Development Services report, Mr. Drapkin.
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Okay, City Attorney report, Mr. Prezioci.
No report, Chair Deerekel.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll stand in adjournment till the regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, August 8th, 2022. Good night.